Welcome, everybody, to our Planning and zoning commission meeting here for November 4th. Please turn your cellphone ringers off. I just fortunately remembered to do mine. The first item on our agenda today is the call of order. And I'd like to go ahead and do the approval of the minutes before we do the consent agenda. If nobody has any objections, Hunter.
So this is a new consent. It's actually on the consent agenda?
Oh, okay.
So it's one of the items that we can step through as needed and then vote at once.
Perfect. That's fine. The last time we did the consent agenda, that was not included. But this is a little different, and I can accept that. No problem. Guys, this consent agenda, Chris, if I do anything wrong, please correct me, sir. This is a little something that we did in the past. We got away from and we're coming back to. And what basically we'll do is the items such as the 1152 elevens and the some just, you know, very simple approvals that don't require much discussion generally will be put on the consent agenda. At that point, the city will present the consent agenda. And at the end, if anybody would like to pull anything off of the consent agenda, they just basically say, "I'd like to pull item UR 24-point blah, blah, blah," or, you know, SD 21-point whatever off of the consent agenda. And then what will happen is the rest of the items on the consent agenda will be voted to be approved. Subject to staff recommendations, we need to make sure that we put the subject to staff recommendations on the motion for the consent agenda. And then everything on the consent agenda will be approved. If there's something people have issues with or don't want approved, then they need to say, you know, "I'd like to make a motion that we pull XYZ off of the consent agenda." Does that sound fairly correct, Hunter and Chris?
Yeah, that's correct. No matters that are going to have a public hearing can be on the consent agenda, which, you know, we wouldn't put them on there anyway. But the commissioners have the discretion to remove anything from the consent agenda separately, as Mr. Turner just said. And if you're going to make a motion for approval, just specify if it is subject to staff recommendations or conditions that you clarify that as part of the motion as well for the consent agenda.
And just, you know, kind of, we're going to still run through kind of each consent agenda item. At the end of each one, break, see if there's any questions of the planning commission. Mr. Chairman, if you want to ask if there's any from the public, we can certainly answer those. There's one we didn't know exactly what to do, so we may want to pull this. We had a holdover utility review last month. We put it on the consent agenda because it's all, there's a lot of those from C Spire in different neighborhoods. So we put it there. We may be able to address those, or we may want to move that to the regular meeting. As we move through this, we do have some representatives from C Spire. So when we get to that point, I think some of the questions raised last month can be answered, if we're okay with that. It's not a public hearing in either case.
Which one is that?
That one is UR 24.09.
All right, Hunter, thank you.
All right. So this is just a visual of the consent agenda. We'll bring that back at the end. We have two extension requests, and you see the letter making that request from S.E. Civil on the left. That is for Harvest Green East Phase 2, SD 21.43. And that is for a second extension. It's a one-year extension. The east side, Phase 2, is under construction right now, so fully support that. And then Case SD 21.45, Phase 2 of the west side, is also asking for that second one-year extension. And that one... So we will be having a pre-construction meeting on that one soon. So any questions on either of those before we move on to the... Moving to the utility reviews, what we'll do here, we have the same conditions of approval on most of the fiber, telecommunications lines. So we'll show those conditions. They will be reflected in the meetings unless we add anything through this. And then we'll show a map of the area. This one, we might want to pause a little bit after because there were some questions raised last month. And to give C Spire a chance to answer some of those questions, and if there's any more comments from the public, we might want to kind of stop here and open that up. We already showed this slide. This is in the Bayview to Summit Street, from North Avenue at the north to Fairhope Avenue on the south, with a few little laterals on Magnolia and Oak. I believe we ran through the questions. A lot of the comments last month was, is there alternate routes on some streets? You know, how can we ensure that C Spire is not hitting other utilities and taking those out? And there was also some concerns of care given to things that were in that easements or right-ofways, such as I believe one person said they had a great myrtle that was just taken out, not planted, replanted. So if you want to see it, give C Spire a chance to come up and then show us questions. Or the public first? I'm not sure which chicken or egg here. The rest of the, I think, some of these are general questions that will apply to the other three utility reviews at C Spire. But we had some specific questions around this area. One specific request was, at least along Bayview, could the installation be moved to the park side, which is the western side of the right-ofway, instead of the eastern side?
Anybody from C Spire wish to speak about anything at this time?
Yeah, I did see the comment, oh, I'm sorry, Will Couch, C Spire.
Yes, sir.
I did see the comment about moving the route to the west side. I'd had a chance to review it, but there is a possibility we could do that. Is there any...
Any other questions?
Engineering.
I guess that question was raised by somebody who said that they thought that their right-ofway was already full. If each line has to have 36 inches, that it's full. And they didn't... What is the process? That's one thing. The other thing is, that was one particular part of that, of Bayview. Once you get further down the street, there's some really significant oak trees on the park side. And so I would have some concerns about boring under those as well. What's the process to figure out what's there? I mean, it should be pretty clear-cut. Is there room there or not?
Yeah, so we would have to get locates called in to see where the actual other utilities would be. And if it deemed that there was no more room, we would have to find an alternate route.
There is one of the problems. We cannot force other utilities to locate things. That is a, we have to alert them. They have to call 811. But they can take that liability on. Unfortunately, a utility can say, "Well, we really don't care if you hit it. We'll come fix it." It's easier for us to do that than to go out and locate things. So that's hard to police. We can't enforce them to come out and locate. We can make sure that if they choose not to, then they have to pay for that damage. And if it's done, it's just a deferral of who's paying for the damage. You know, I think some of the more important questions is the plan should reflect what's in the field. And there's some, you know, spot digging and checking and finding that out. What do we call that?
Yeah, one of the things we had mentioned last time was requiring Level C engineering subsurface investigation, so that we know what's there. You know, just dealing with our city staff and dealing with the, you know, utility contractors on the permitting side. Our staff members, the right-ofway inspectors, public works, utilities, they want to do the best they can to put it in a place where there's the least opportunity for there to be a problem. But they're also very good about trying to satisfy the needs of the citizens. We get that call all the time, that the folks don't want the beds in their yards, or they don't want things here or there, or they don't want handholds every so often. And these guys have gone out and they've met with them. They've told them, "Hey, you can't have a bed here. You can't have a handhold here. You got to move it down, so you're not bunching things up." So, you know, from my standpoint, I have a lot of faith in our public works department, our right-of-way inspection team, and our utilities to tell us where it really needs to go. Because they're the ones that are at the greatest risk of being hit with these. And if we can accommodate it and put it on the other side of the road, I'm sure they will. If for some reason there's something over there, or there's issues about getting crossed back, then they're going to do, they're going to do the responsible thing, in my opinion, of trying to make sure it's the least obtrusive to the residents and the safest install method that they can find. I mean, I just, that's what I see in dealing with them on a daily basis.
In any areas where that might be an issue, we have no problems coming out doing a sidewalk, you know.
They've worked well with other projects where they're moving stuff on different sides. They're going around. They're avoiding trees.
That was kind of my question. Is there a process to investigate and adjust?
Sure, yeah. You know, our right-of-way team, they'll go out. They walk it. They drive it. They look at it. They see what's there. They'll compare it to the plans. And if they see a problem, then they'll, they coordinate with the contractor. And, you know, overall, I just, I have more faith in them being able to handle it in the field than us talking about theoretical issues. They're the ones that are going to be out there doing it. They're the ones that are going to take care of it.
And just to kind of, as Eric mentioned on that level, so we talked the first time we came up with these new conditions. But Item 10 actually says that that Level C subsurface engineering will be required.
Right.
So typically what happens is, we're looking at the area in the 1152-11 review. Then they go and finalize those plans with more detailed information on where it is and will work. So this feedback on looking at the option of the west side of the road. There's also, to answer your question specifically within those conditions, consultation with the city's horticulturists to determine if the required depth of bore must be increased so that no trees are impacted by the project. The contractor is responsible for any damaged trees. We've even had things where we've had to look at bore pits. Get, you know, okay, you've got to be this deep, but now everything's so tight. Do you even have room for a bore pit without damaging roots? So I know I've been drug into some of those questions from our right-of-way inspector.
Yeah, because there's no fine that really adequately addresses a 60, 70, 80, 100-year-old tree being...
Right.
That's my question, is the, on your item number two, the contractor is responsible for any damaged trees. What is, I mean, I think we really need to be very specific.
Those have fines, the pretty significant fines.
I was going to say that they need to be significant.
Really significant fines.
Depends on the size of the tree, but can approach $50,000 for one tree.
That mitigation is covered under the tree ordinance.
Right.
Where that language comes from would follow, would follow that ordinance for what that restitution would be. You know, to be clear, you guys, the planning commission at this level isn't approving for the public as well. You're not approving the permit right now. This is just, you know, approval to move forward with the permit application. And then all the details that Hunter and Eric have been discussing are looked at in further detail.
Thank you for clarifying that.
I will, I will say I have, there has been a, and this is where I think we rely on C Spire to maybe, okay, what can be done? Because there's been a more frequent hitting of lines as of late, at least what we're hearing.
Well, yeah. And I mean, we've got, what, four contractors that are out there putting fiber in at the same time in different areas. So, yeah, that's happening frequently.
And sometimes that is a few steps down the line from C Spire, what subs are out there, you know, and really making sure they understand the conditions of these approvals and what they're responsible for. And mainly being, being available to our citizens, you know, that are there. There's questions. There's hang tags required with a number that someone can not get in a phone tree, pick up the phone and answer. I hope those are still being done, and maybe it's time to...
I think we should put the city planners' phone number on that, too, cellphone personally.
It was discussed. We had a fight who's going to get that one.
No, several years ago in Rock Creek, they put my direct-in-dial number on the email to the HOA members. So, yes, that's, I would suggest not doing that.
We have periodically, and I think we stopped, when we implemented these new rules, we did pick up the phone and just dial that number on the hang tag.
To my knowledge, our right-of-way supervisor still calls those.
Oh, yeah.
They require that right-of-way tag prior to the permit being issued. And he calls to verify that it is, in fact, a working phone number that gets a person.
Yeah, and also we put the sandwich boards out there saying, "Hey, we're in your neighborhood doing construction." It has the phone number on those. And also, at least seven days, we're trying to do the door hangers prior to construction.
All right. Any other questions for C Spire at this time? All right, thank you, sir. Thanks for coming this week.
Thank you.
What's that?
Any public comments?
Any public comments or questions relating to that? Sir, if you'll state your name and your address for our record, please.
Of course. Good evening. My name is Donald De Guts. My home is 110 Lakeany Avenue in Fairhope. First question, Mr. Fontenot, were you here at the last month's meeting?
I was not.
You were not. Have you watched the YouTube? Do you know what was given as a prelude to these utility requests?
No.
No? Okay. Section 1152-11 of the Alabama Code, we refer to it, 1152-11, says that "Whenever the commission shall have adopted the master plan of the municipality, no public utility shall be constructed or authorized in the municipality until the location, character, and extent thereof shall have been submitted to and approved by the commission." So I'm looking to you to be the approvers of the location, character, extent, et cetera. I know you put the burden on our planning commission, committee, and, I mean, the planning department. Mr. Cortina's spoken of their responsibility and what you intend to do and look for, and I appreciate that. But the responsibility is with the commission, according to my reading of the law. Location refers to at least the surface boxes, the beds Eric mentions. There was a mention of handholds, things like that, that are going to disrupt, potentially disrupt our landscaping and our neighborhood, not to mention all the construction and all. The area defined, the area marked out there, is our neighborhood. We call it the Bluff. It's been called the Bluff. I didn't make that up. It was settled here at the beginning of the founding of this town. So the plat for that area, C Spire may not be aware, is turn of the century, the last century. So there's a lot going on in there besides our ancient trees and utilities. In our neighborhood, we already have fiber. It's AT&amp;T. I don't know if C Spire, if anyone can represent C Spire in their marketing or business plan as to whether or not this is going to make some money for them. We have AT&amp;T fiber. We have MediaCom COAX. I don't know if anyone in our neighborhood is going to be interested in purchasing your service. What I've seen online is that you charge more than AT&amp;T does for Fiber 500, for example, 500 megabits per second. So I don't know if there's really a need or a desire in our, in our neighborhood for this service at the expense with the risk that you've been discussing for the first few minutes of this meeting and as Hunter raised as a prelude during the last meeting. So I'm asking C Spire to withdraw their request until they've had a good, close look at the financial gain that they may have. The city itself receives a small fee, a franchise fee, and then they get a percentage of the activity. Is it really going to be worth it? Is it going to pay for all the activity and the inspections and all the work you have to do in this hundreds-year-old, 100-year-old neighborhood? So I can appreciate C Spire coming in to compete with AT&amp;T and others in all the brand-new neighborhoods, out there in the flats and all. But talking, as you have last month and now, about the risks and the concerns of some neighbors, I think we need to ask C Spire to reconsider before you go ahead with this. I do have another question, though, for C Spire. From what I can read here online, the C Spire specification for wiring standards says that you need an inch-and-a-quarter conduit to the house from these beds or from the right-ofways. Is that right? You have to...
Sir, you need to address the, up here, when we don't get back and forth between C Spire.
Okay, so you brought them here to answer questions. I have three questions.
Okay. If you'll list the questions, I'll bring them back up to answer the questions.
Okay, so please ask these questions. I appreciate that. So from what I have read, unlike AT&amp;T, and if this is incorrect, and let's find that out, that these units need external AC power to the units that are, or the units that are mounted to the side of a house once a subscription is ordered. It also requires an inch-and-a-quarter conduit to the house from these right-of-way terminals. Again, AT&amp;T simply uses a ditch witch or manually slots and brings up the reinforced fiber optic. There's no AC power required on the side of the house. There's no conduit required from the right-ofways, and I've had it done just recently. So, and I've seen it done. It's a very simple, clear operation. They're already in the neighborhood. Why would we want to go and lay conduit and such? So that's my question. Is there AC power required to the side? Do you have to run a conduit? And again, I would ask C Spire to withdraw their request until, or unless, they determine that there's a financial gain and a business case for installation in the Bluff area, which was settled in 1904. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. C Spire, do y'all, do you know the answers? I assume you can't probably answer the question about the financial gain. But if we'll just relay back to the folks that they, two types out there, and just confirm. I assume they've already got that idea, but you've heard the concern there. If you'll put that up the channel. But we did have a question. Do y'all require AC power and conduit to the house, on the house, and conduit to the house?
So we have switched to one-inch duct, and it does not, it does not run up to the house. It just runs in the right-ofway. And we use a ditch witch, like was stated before, and that's how we plow our drops, our reinforced fiber, to the house.
Okay.
And we mount a box on the outside, and there's, so in the new technology we have now, we don't have to have power outside.
Okay.
So it's all done on the inside of the house.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. All right, Hunter, want to move?
All right. Moving to the next one. This is another C Spire project, same conditions of approval. This is for 24.15, and this is an area around Gafer Extension, as shown on the map. Any questions on this one?
Mr. Hunter, is there any questions on this? All right, moving along.
All right, and the third one, 24.17, is Fairhope Avenue, Bishop Road bounded on the west, and Hoffren Drive on the east, kind of a section of that subdivision. So same, same conditions that we're recommending as all the utility reviews for fiber.
Any questions on this section, commissioners? All right, thank you, Hunter.
All right. Last one, UR 24.18. It's also C Spire. This is Sugar, Summer Lake subdivision in general. You know, there is potentially a problem on Dara Street, maybe in that right-ofway where it's unopened. But I don't think there's any customers on that side of the road anyway.
We're good there.
So probably we'll be able to handle that.
Are you talking down on the end?
Right.
No, we're good.
Yep. Chet Avenue is not a cut-through, so will be, not be connecting to, there's an easement there, not a public right-ofway on the western side. But otherwise, this is the area. These are relatively narrow streets with vertical curbs, so a little bit different from a lot of our neighborhoods. And a lot of trees right between the sidewalk and the, so, you know, there's not a whole lot of space here to accommodate any fiber. So I think the Level 3 will be critical here. But other than that, same conditions recommended by staff for the approval of UR 24.18. And again, that is the consent agenda item. So if nothing is removed, that can be voted on at once. If anything would move to the regular, we'll address that as a separate case on tonight's agenda.
All right. This is not a public...
There's no public hearing. We haven't opened a public hearing.
Just because I let him speak. There's no requirement to allow anybody to speak in 1152-11.
I mean, if there's any comments, we can address them now, or... There's a...
Certainly.
Mayor Sullivan is the vice president of the, live locally, I'm sorry, the, is Vice President, of the Alabama League of Municipalities. And that league promotes involvement with the public. This is a public space. You're appointed in the public domain. You should invite the public to speak. The mayor supports this. Maybe you didn't get the memo.
Mr. De Guts, you were allowed to speak. You weren't told no.
No, no, but the gentleman here is also asking to speak, and he asked permission.
He hasn't asked, he hasn't asked permission to speak.
Oh, you did? Maybe I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
No, I said he did not ask permission. It's not an 1152, the 1152-11 is not a public hearing. Nobody's required to be able to speak. I like to err on the open side, so I let you speak. I had no idea that he wanted to speak.
Okay, that's fine. I do have...
And we asked the questions that you wanted us to ask. We have a pretty narrow, you know, legally, what we can do on 1152s is pretty narrow. Even asking the questions on the houses and how they come in does not have anything to do. That's out of the right-ofway. With our purview, we are simply, you know, giving a heads-up. But, you know, if there are concerns about the right-ofways and going in the right-ofways, really the place to address those is with the city council when they sign the next franchise agreements. Because there are contracts set up, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but there are contracts set up with the franchise agreements. And certainly, they have the choice to go or not to go, you know, financially speaking. But if they decide to go in there and they meet the requirements, you know, that we have, we're pretty obliged to allow them to do that.
Yeah, no, I know I'm not arguing with that. But the fact that you call something a public hearing or not, it's difficult to...
The public hearing is set by state law, so I don't call it that or not. For what should or shouldn't be a public hearing, you go talk to Chris Elliott and your state legislators and have them decide what should or shouldn't be a public hearing. They have decided in their infinite wisdom that 1152-elevens are not public hearings. But if you think they should be, you know, petition them.
All right, all right.
But I do, I like to err on the side of openness.
No, I do appreciate that. I didn't get that. I didn't...
That's why I allowed you to speak.
Get that impression.
Certainly.
Yeah, good. So you'll allow him to speak, then?
If you have, if you have anything to say, go ahead. He's got my cellphone. He sees me at the workout room. You know, I don't mind. So he can talk to me anytime he wants to.
Hey, guys, I'm Carlton Spinks. I'm 361 North Summit. And not to, not to beat a dead horse, but I did want to remind you guys, when we did the AT&amp;T work last year, they trashed my yard pretty hard. And I think it was September that they installed it. And they kept saying they'd come back, and they'd make these improvements, and kept saying they would do it. I kept following up with them, no less than 20 calls. And I finally did call Sherry, and Sherry got people, I think Eric and one of your colleagues, got them on the ball, got somebody out there. They did replace a sod. But it just, it was, it was a lot of work on my part. So this oversight that we have going, that'll be very welcome. I don't think that we can probably stop C Spire from coming in. I think that would be kind of crazy to hope that. Plus, I mean, AT&amp;T could gouge us, you know, and then what would we have? So, but I just, I look for some care. Also, I don't know how you pick the locations, and I don't know the terminology for these boxes. But I've got about everything in my yard except a fire hydrant in terms of utilities. And, you know, this last time around, I've got this new concrete box from AT&amp;T, and I've got at least two poles. I have a light pole, suspending wires, and then a plastic pole that goes up beside that. I'm not really sure what it's for. And then I think a telephone stanchion. And so it leads me to a question of, is, some of these things, when they expire or retire and no one's using them, is there a process, protocol of identifying and removing things that aren't used anymore? Even, even cables that are, you know, hanging down the pole that are cut, obviously they're not being used. Is there a process for that?
It's a complaint process when we get the call. It's a complaint process when we get the call? But yes, we have, you know, you know, David Thomas and Michael Smith are two right-of-way folks. If we get calls in for those kind of things, they will go out, they will look, they will deal with it if it's, if it's an abandoned line, or it's an abandoned overhead something, yes. They, because they have much closer contacts to each of the construction companies that are doing the install.
Right.
And they're usually pretty effective at, at getting those things taken care of.
Okay.
But what you mentioned with all of the, you know, things that are in your yard, those are the kind of things they're gonna go look at, and they're gonna look, okay, we've got a house here that's got, you know, a handhold, and they got a bed, and they've got this, so that's when they start looking at the detail plan, saying, hey, you know, we need to move this down to an area instead of, you know, making you have all the connection points for the whole subdivision in your yard.
Well, I hope they weren't looking at me as like, nah, all the terminal hubs are here, let's just put another one, so.
Sure.
Okay.
And, and those are, even in our conditions, I know we kinda blow through those, but being on-site to locate those so they're not spread all over the yards trying to.
Yeah.
At least where they're, when they're needed, they're consolidated in one area around a yard. I wanna elaborate a little bit on the removal of old. That is something we challenge, you know, you talk about the 20 calls. We do that quite frequently to try to get things out. There is also, with AT&amp;T, they've been a company for a long time. They predate franchise agreements. So, they have things that are not, you know, franchise agreements, it gives, it gives us some ability. When you're working in our city, we can set up certain rules. Those projects that predate that are kind of a, a difficult to, to do. And there are poles, a lot of the poles in the city are owned by this, by the, a lot of, electric department installs a lot of those, but AT&amp;T also owns poles. There's a dynamic in this day and age that's also a struggle, because old copper lines, the old 911, you know, to have a 911 phone line, you know, those are aerial. They're on those old poles, and quite a bit of us are migrating to newer technologies, but keeping those old lines and those customers connected is still, they're required to do that.
Sure.
And that techno, that, that can't go underground as long as somebody's still paying for that phone line they've had since 1950. So, that, that, especially the aerials are sometimes a struggle to get moved.
Okay.
But you will look around town, and you will see a lot of poles that are still there, and there's only one line on it, because all the other companies have relocated off that, and some, a lot of the projects we've seen from AT&amp;T come in under these utility reviews, they are moving those things underground.
Okay.
So, it's a, it's an evolution, not a, not an overnight fix, unfortunately.
Well, is there, is there a person or a department that I should contact that maybe can help me do a review of what is on my property?
I mean, in terms of city staff? Reach out to me, and we'll get you in touch with the right people.
All right, thanks, Eric. I'm good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Carlton, it's there. All right, commissioners, any questions, concerns? C Spire's here. If not, I will entertain a motion, and please remember to include staff recommendations in such motion.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion to pass the items on the consent agenda according to staff recommendations for each of the, each of the cases.
Do I have a second?
A second, Ted.
All right, I have a motion, a second, to pass all of the items on the consent agenda, subject to staff recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
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 The opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. No old business, I assume, unless anything's come up in the last moment. So, next item on the agenda, SR 2405, request of Jade Consulting for Encounter Development for a site plan approval for a house relocation on Lot 11.
Thank you. Okay. Like Chairman Turner said, this is Jade requesting this, and Thomas is here on behalf of the owner of Encounter Development for a site plan approval to relocate the Close Encounters house from Lot 6 to Lot 11 of the Encounter Commercial Retail Development, which is on the northeast corner of Alabama Highway 104 and 181. Trade Gen Ride is authorized agent engineer, and subject property is a little more than acre at 1.02, and is Zone B2, and the existing building that's gonna be relocated is 2,160 square feet. Are you guys familiar with what this was? It used to be Punk's Place. Have you seen the movie from 1979? The good aliens, they're nice, okay? And, um, this is our new North Arrow. Adobe was being difficult, so that's why that looks strange. It, it was freaking out that day. We couldn't fix it. Right? Okay, so, I drew the friendly alien in Lot 6 where the house is currently, and then it's gonna go down the road to Lot 11 over here. And this is the site plan after it gets relocated. You can see here, they have some permeable parking spaces. There's handicap back there. Here's where they're gonna have their dumpster. Actually, it's just a garbage can, 'cause this is gonna be for office use, but that's what it looks like once it's over there. All right. So, the setbacks for the Encounter Development vary. B2 requires only a 20-foot front setback, according to the Table 32. Lot 11 actually fronts Encounter Drive, and that has a 20-foot setback, and the other setbacks are 20-foot rear and 10-foot side setbacks. That's what the building looks like right now on 181. This is some of the elevation, and the building itself is a two-story. It's estimated at 25 feet. It takes up 3% of Lot 11. Once it gets there, the proposed use is office space. All the elevations are actually included in the packet. The material for the building are brick stucco with the stone columns that are there. And like I said, it was 1977 film, Close Encounters of the Third Kind, with Richard Dreyfus and the late, great Terry Gar. And these are some of the scenes, 'cause I thought that would be fun. It's a good movie. So, it's actually where the kid gets abducted, but then they bring him back. They bring everybody back. They're nice aliens. So, there is a landscaping plan, and it was submitted, and it's been approved. The applicant is preserving four trees, and a heritage nuttle oak will be removed and replanted on site. It is this guy right here that they're taking it, I believe it's that guy, and moving it down here, but you can see it when it's close up. So, it did have a surplus parking with 10 spaces. Eight's what's required according to the parking schedule, so you are allowed 20% overage, and they must be permeable if you go over that, if you do that 20% overage, which they met. And the perimeter landscaping requirements have also been met from the tree and landscaping ordinance. The site plan does include interior sidewalks on the site and a sidewalk on Encounter. Mechanical equipment that's present has been finalized. They're all in the site plan. There's really not that much. Dumpster location, like I mentioned, is actually just garbage, and it's collected. It's just a can, and it's located towards the back of the building, and they are gonna be surrounded by sweet bag, sweet bay magnolia and camellias. So, we talk about drainage has already been accounted for, for the Encounter Commercial Retail Center in an earlier case, 2413, so there are not any retention or detention facilities on the individual lots. There is a large retention pond within Lot 12, and this is Lot 11, which is on the kind of corn, bottom corner of Lot 12 of the Encounter Development, where most of the drainage from these lots is gonna be directed. Assigned plan was not submitted, but it will, will have to be approved with, via the signed ordinance, and erosion control plan was submitted with application and has deemed to be acceptable. So, a photometric plan was submitted, and it's also included as an attachment. The first draft had poles at 18 feet, which are too high, because it's less than 50 parking spots, so they shouldn't exceed 10 feet overall. So, Jade revamped it and sent us an updated, and it's fine. And that's what it looks like right there, the light streetlight detail. Utility plan was submitted. It has been reviewed and approved by the appropriate providers. ADA requirements have been met. There was a thorough traffic study conducted for the entire Encounter Development in that earlier case, and the road infrastructure was designed in accordance with recommendations from the traffic study. The cover sheet for the subject property, and Jade's aware of this, has the speed limit posted, the repeat offenders. Posted as 30 minute, 30 miles per hour, but it's actually supposed to be 20 miles per hour, but they'll fix it, and it's a reoccurring thing, which is, and it's consistent with the residential developments to the north. In the Encounter Development, we always wanna say this, that shared driveways are encouraged, and they will be required as build-out continues, because if you recall, there's limited turnouts for some of these lots in this development. You don't want curb cuts everywhere. So, that's the architectural plan, which is much like it is now, but there's details, and we recommend approval of this relocation, SR 2405.
And before Gary asks, there is a multimodal trail, bike, golf carts, and pedestrian already put in, in the major subdivision.
Yeah.
Any questions for staff at this time?
Uh, this may be half staff, half developer. I'm just curious about, I'm so glad they're saving this house, but the pervious, the surplus spaces are required to be pervious. This just says gravel. I mean, gravel's not necessarily pervious unless the base is engineered to be pervious. Do we, do we specify when we say surplus spaces must be pervious, that they, you know, functionally, maybe this is a developer.
There is one caveat, we do know.
We look at that detail usually at the building permit stage.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure we don't, you know, if it's just gravel on a packed base, it won't be pervious.
Yeah.
No, that's, that's correct. On the building permit, it will show the detail of what that other base is going to be, what type of gravel, how it's gonna, what density of that is going to be to ensure that it is a true pervious surface and not gonna become crushed concrete at the end.
Right.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we.
Or gel into some kind of pavement.
You don't override that accidentally.
Any other questions for staff at this time?
The, the largest trees on Lot 6, are they gonna be preserved?
Yes. That's B2 commercial property. They are all protected as heritage trees. Anything over 20 inches is, we don't have a survey for that lot, but yes.
Does this meet the subdivision regs? And, I mean, it meets all the subdivision regs, doesn't it?
We're not really in this, this is, this is site plan review.
Right, site plan's not a subdivision, but.
Site plan review, so not a subdivision case.
But it was a commercial subdivision.
Yeah, it's, at this time, it's.
It is a commercial subdivision.
Okay, so this hits the site plan review due to the square footage.
This was a mandatory site plan review as part of the subdivision case.
I was wondering, my, that's, got it. I'm, I'm caught up now.
It didn't hit the, hit the highest.
Can you start over again now, there's less intelligent people figuring out where we are in class? Um, got it.
Jade's here, if you guys have any further questions.
Okay.
Um, I had a comment. Could you, on the landscape plan, could you go back to that?
It's just a, yes.
And this is just kinda based on experience about future issues, and I know Jamie approved it, but I was studying the landscape plan more, and so, we've had trouble in the past on the requirement for the screening of the vehicular use areas. So, and, you know, we don't say exactly how to call that out, but we do have a standard, and that the shrubs used for that screening purpose are to be 48 inches at planting. So, on the schedule, they have seven gallon.
Okay.
Well, they may have, a seven gallon may be 12 inches tall, it may be 50 inches tall. It just seemed to me it would, and we've had, you know, more than once, and this has occurred several times, is that we had to have, they put in the gallon size that is on the schedule, but they don't meet that. So then, you know, the landscaper's like, well, I met the schedule. Well, you know, and then so Jamie has to have them pull them up and replace them before they get their certificate, so I would just suggest that on the landscape plan, that those be called out to the size to meet our requirement, and then that would save some trouble, you know.
Yeah, sure.
Going forward, so.
Okay.
And then also, I'm not sure if it, you know, if there's a conflict with the cone of visibility, but our tree requirement for that requires that the screen start for, start four feet from the curb, and they've got it 10, 12, they, they have it more than, than, than the four feet, so, but I'm not sure. Sometimes we have a.
Why don't we get the.
Yeah, we can get it updated.
Let's get Jade up and ask.
Okay.
Or we can, you can do, we might have to require them to update it, to have those things in the schedule and stuff.
Yeah, don't mind coming up, yes, sir.
Good evening, y'all. My name is Thomas Luce. I'm with Jade Consulting, the applicant for Encounter Development LLC. 208 Grano Road is our office, and thank you, Shell, for the colorful presentation, and it's a fun one. But yeah, these, any of these landscape, landscape questions that you may have, I'm happy to relay to our landscape architect, and y'all's approval could be conditional to those clarifications. So, that being said.
You know about the pervious?
Yes, so that pervious, forgive me for correcting, so that's actually gonna be a pervious concrete, is what we are proposing right now, and those areas are different, yeah, if you're familiar.
It's like public parking lot?
Kind, I'm not familiar with public, but yeah, they, they're, they're pouring such a way to have porous properties so that water can infiltrate through them, and they're not stuck up top, so.
Okay, so it's an engineered pervious solution with a pervious base.
Yes, correct.
Awesome.
Well, those will be in our, in our latest and greatest plans, those, those buildups showing what those will look like.
The only thing we'd recommend there, that, that's a maintenance, you know, can be a deferred maintenance problem that sometimes doesn't get maintenance, you know? Papers don't require, you know, maintenance if it's an option.
All right, any, any more questions while the developers here?
And what I'd recommend is, for the landscape, we don't need a condition, that's the rules. So, if, if we can recommend, while we're here, and you can make sure our landscape architect takes a look at the meetings to see those specific comments, I believe, ironically, it's the same person that dealt with in the past, and I've seen revisions to new plans when it hits construction documents, that is checking some of those heights, so.
That's why I brought that up. I think it was the same.
Yeah, make sure you put that in your notes back there, ask a.
This still has to come to us for a land disturbance permit, anyway, so that's what it would be.
But it doesn't need to be, to be redundant, but if you wanna make it a condition for, for memorialization, there's no problem with it.
I have a question, it's not, I don't know, for the longest time since I've been here, I don't ever remember us removing a heritage tree and replanning it, and what is the likelihood of that, and how is the outcome of that? And I'm just kind of, just in general, asking.
And let's make sure what we're talking about, there's no.
A heritage nuttle oak tree will be removed and replanted on site.
I believe the one that they're removing is just that frontage, just one of those frontage trees across Encounter.
I think the terminology may have been an error in the report. It's not a heritage tree that's been, that's 20 inches by our tree ordinance and subdivision regulations. It was a street tree that was installed during the subdivision creation, when they were all aligned, and then now with this road cut and the drive aisle being in place, they're taking that tree, that's where the drive aisle is going.
It was just a typo, there's not a heritage.
It's not a heritage tree.
Got it.
So, under the landscape plan, it just says the heritage nuttle oak will be removed and replanted on site, so you can see my cause.
I can certainly see the, see the confusion in that, yes, ma'am.
Good question. All right, any further questions for our applicant? Thank you so much for being here. Yes, sir. All right, this is not a public hearing, but does anybody have any questions about this at this time? All right, moving along then, commissioners, any further questions or concerns? Yes, sir. Like Chris has.
I was just gonna say, this is a recommendation to city council.
Yes, I should've mentioned that earlier. This is a recommendation to city council, so we, city council ultimately decide this item.
This approval will be specific to the relocation of this house, 'cause I know I'd gotten a couple calls from, might've been Jade or another structural engineer, asking, and asking about the logistics of moving that house and what would be required. So, I'm assuming they've done all the engineering checks. They know that they can actually lift and move this house, and it's in, you know, good enough condition to be relocated?
Yes, sir. The architects and the structural guys, they've, they've been, they've visited the house multiple times.
So, they're good? Okay.
They're getting a plan in action, and I'm, their plan is to fizzle that there on the building process.
Okay, good deal. Okay.
And just theoretically, if this turned out not to be the case, since everything here is specifically designed on the house, they'd have to build something.
They have to come, yeah, come back.
Just like that.
Right.
Or, or match the house.
Right.
Well.
Right.
I guess, yeah, match the house.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which essentially negates, if they don't relocate the house, negates this site plan.
Okay, that's, the drawings look a little different than the actual house, so if that doesn't matter, if this is just negated, if.
I think there was some talk about the porch, you know, those, can't pick up and move the porch as is, so maybe adding a little bit.
There's just the dormer pitch.
Only difference is that there's a rear porch that was not original to the house that is being removed, but the front porch, the grand porch, is remaining.
The dormer looked different in the drawings than it is, and that's not important if it's just representing something that's going to be moved.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Yeah, I believe, yeah, I believe that their plan is to rotate it. I'm not exactly sure what, what improvements will be, structurally need to be made to, but.
It's a repair.
All right.
Gotcha.
Thank you, sir. All right, commissioners, if there are no concerns or questions, I will entertain a motion to recommend to city council, or to not recommend to city council.
I was just pondering redundant conditions, how to, didn't we have the things you needed to add to that?
Well, there's a question that Paul was concerned about, the landscape plan not stating height, but stating the gallons of the bushes, and also the front paid plants not being set back at the entrance for, you know, arc where you can see getting out. Hunter said that those, that would be redundant due to the fact that those are landscape requirements anyway, but redundancy doesn't hurt anything if somebody wanted to throw a, you know. It's in the tree ordinance. If you want, if you want that, us to get those revisions before we take it to the city council, I mean, that's a condition.
I just.
I think that would be a good idea.
You wouldn't do that, okay.
Okay, yeah, I would say that you could easily just make a motion subject to changing the, the, changing any items on the landscape plan that are not currently in compliance with our tree ordinance, and I think our applicant knows what that would be, and I think that before city council, he'll be fine.
Well, I'll move that we recommend approval of case SR 24.05, encounter host relocation to lot 11, and the counter commercial resource retail center, with the conditions that the drawings be updated to explicitly comply with the landscape, the tree ordinance, before presentation to council.
Okay, I've got a motion to recommend approval, subject to the landscape plan being updated. Do I have a second?
I second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on, Rockwell Place is the next item on the agenda, SD 2423. By the way, y'all from C Spire, there's no requirement to stay unless, if y'all are bored, it's not considered rude to just bug on out the second you're done, unless there's something else y'all are waiting for. Yes, sir, thank y'all for coming.
All right, good evening, everybody. So this is a public hearing to request, consider the request of Sawgrass Consulting on behalf of Rockwell LLC, its final plat approval of Rockwell Place. It's a 252-unit multiple occupancy project, approximately 20.91 acres. It's located on the east side of Highway 181, just south of Harvest Green East subdivision, across from the water subdivision, and near vicinity to the project we were just discussing. On the screen is the left is the aerial view of the site, or on the right is the aerial view, and the left is the zoning map. This particular portion, there's a little history to this, I'll go over real quick. This was a two-lot subdivision that created the lot that this apartment complex is situated on. And then on the west side, it created a separate parcel that is zoned B2, it did annex into the city as B2. It has a future subdivision preliminary plat associated with it to create some commercial lots along it. But to be clear, the apartment site is an unzoned by the city, but is zoned by Baldwin County.
Okay, so the landscape ordinance did not apply.
So, a little bit to that was, this review began when we did have our jurisdiction inside of our whole planning jurisdiction. Because we started the preliminary review, our building department had issued building permits to start with, we continued this from the beginning to the end. Similar, a few months ago, Carmel Park Flats is a very similar example. It began when we had our jurisdiction, and it was in the unzoned Baldwin County. After those jurisdiction boundaries or obligations were changed, we have completed these to the end. And I believe we're nearing one of the last projects that had begun outside of our corporate limits that we are finishing up now.
And just to add a quick, this one was unique, because when the jurisdictional things happened, the county took one of, phase of this to their planning commission, which probably shouldn't have happened, and I think that was clarified later, but everybody thought a certain date is happening, and we gotta, everybody's gotta move, when in that actuality, it was given a two-year window to make that transition. So that approval implemented a lot of nuances to this, so we've had a, even the council, the city council has an agreement between a lot of parties on how this will be approved and finalized, and allow the city to accept the road for maintenance at a future date.
Any clarifying questions before I proceed for the details of this particular project? So in general, the major infrastructure has been installed and completed, except for the private access drive within the development. Staff will review the completion of each phase prior to release of the certificate of occupancy for the buildings included in that phase. There's an entrance on the north side that will remain open for construction traffic. The main entrance will be limited to the residents. Their construction fencing will be relocated, as shown in the phasing plan that was in the packet, and completed to a separate public space from construction, making sure that the, any residences aren't having free rein to walk in through the construction side. On the utilities, all utilities are to remain private inside the development, and any maintenance will be the responsibility of the owner and/or POA HOA. Real quick, water, the master meter was installed for the entire development. Sewer, private sewer, gravity feeds from the units to a lift station that will be accepted by Fairhoop Utilities, and maintain a force main that's extended down the southern property line to the 181 right away. The land where that lift station sits will be dedicated to the city of Fairhoop. Power is provided by River Area Utilities. Gas was not requested. AT&amp;T is the communication provider. Trash pickup, I'm gonna touch on that, it will be provided by waste management via a trash dumpster that's located near that northern secondary entrance. However, during the completion of the vertical construction, a valet trash service will be provided, that includes daily garbage pickup at the front door of each unit, and then access to the permanent dumpster location will be available after the completion of Phase 7. So all of that to say that the occupants of the first few phases aren't going to have to go through a construction area to be able to take their trash away. That will be valet done, performed by the developer. On the plan is the proposed phasing for the completion. I have some aerials that we'll show earlier, where they've actually almost already completed all the way through Phase 4 on the southern side of the property. North is to your left, but in general, these phases are the completion for the vertical build only. That will include the wearing surface of the road in front of that portion, the striping, the landscaping, anything that makes that phase complete. A few aerials, this is looking, if you were looking up from the 181 side, same view that the phasing plan was located. As you can see, those first, first phases that are right up front around the clubhouse and the entire central green space area has all been completed, it is sodded, the pool is in, landscaping in, parking lot in, striped, essentially the buildings, if they were complete, ready for move-in. Just looking from the opposite side, side of the future phases that are still under construction, it has been stabilized, the BMPs are still up. And a view looking from the northern side. Before I get into the recommendations, we're going to add one recommendation to this, because another caveat to this project was some traffic improvements that had to be installed out along Highway 181. While those traffic improvements for the turning lanes have been installed, there will be a future traffic light coming. We do have a performance bond, or not, we, ALDOT has a performance bond for that work. However, ALDOT has not completed an inspection on-site to release that open to the public. So a condition we will add to this is that a certificate, Hunter, do you have something specific?
Yes, if you wanna.
I'll read through these first, and then we'll add this, tag it on at the end for your guys' review. So staff recommends approval with the following conditions, that the area for the lift station shall be deeded as a lot to the city of Fairhoop. Staff shall approve each phase, buildings, and final site work prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy for individual buildings. The final MOP plat shall be signed and recorded after completion of the last phase. Staff will coordinate the appropriate signature blocks and notes. Four, upon completion of Phase 8, staff will perform a final inspection of the public improvements prior to submitting an acceptance resolution to the city council. Five, a letter confirming onsite sewer, water, and drives are to remain privately maintained, it is not the responsibility of the city of Fairhoop or Baldwin County, signed by the developer-owner. Six, a complete as-built set in GIS shape files shall be provided as part of the closeout of the final phase. And then the last condition to add, I'll have Hunter read that.
Yes, and, and we did talk to ALDOT late this afternoon, right 30 minutes before the meeting. They've done an inspection, are working on a punch list, no, not sure exactly how long that time limit is, but to add a condition to ensure that nobody's occupying any buildings that are using that without public access, we would like to add a condition that no building shall be occupied until ALDOT has approved Rockwell Boulevard for public access. And we accept kind of more informal, not their approval of their, we won't get final approval of their permit until February, but we will accept just a written email or something like that, that.
No building occupied until Rockwell Avenue is approved for public access.
Yeah.
So, I'm available for any questions that you may have for staff, and Tim Lally with Sawgrass is with us this evening to answer any questions on behalf of the applicant.
Any questions for staff at this time? All right, thank you, Mike. Tim, do you have anything to add? All right, Tim's back there hiding in the back. I'll open up the public hearing, anybody wish to speak to this item? In that case, I will close the public hearing. Staff, any further questions? I will entertain a motion.
(inaudible) motion to approve SD 2423 Rockwell Apartments, subject to staff recommendation with the inclusion of item number seven, that no building shall be occupied until ALDOT approves Rockwell for public access.
All right, I have a motion to approve, subject to staff recommendations with number seven, adding that no building will be occupied until Rockwell is approved by ALDOT for public access. Do I have a second?
I second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously. Last item on our agenda is considering the approval of resolution for our updated comprehensive plan.
Okay, and we do not have a slide for this, I think we've, we've had that posted for quite some time. This is a little bit different comprehensive plan than we've approved in the past, so I kind of want to caveat, as, and with this approval, some of the concepts introduced, and kind of what the intention is. In big picture, this, the intention of this comprehensive plan is not to approve it tonight, set it on a shelf for the next 10 years, and then do this process again. This introduces concepts that will incrementally work through that implementation metrics at the back of the, the manual, and, and influence regulatory policy. It's going to influence it, it might not match exactly with what's being proposed, because there's new concepts. And the main one there is a place type, a place type in lieu of traditional zoning districts. And that was a decision tree we had to make, are we going to introduce the concept, are we going to introduce what other cities have done? Oxford, Mississippi, for example, went and changed their whole city at one time to place types instead of zoning districts. Other areas have made this implementation of taking the concepts from the place types and implementing it into their zoning districts. So there's some concepts out there that there's not components in our zoning district, in our zoning ordinance to handle right now. So it is not fair to say we propose this maybe in this area. The comp plan doesn't give anybody the warmth that, hey, we're gonna get that, that's exactly what we want. We're gonna work through each of these concepts and proposals, be back in front of the planning commission first, to vet these things, and ultimately to our city council, to see if they get adopted into our zoning ordinance, influence things like subdivision regulations, building codes, and other requirements. There's a, a long vetting process to some of those things, and it's gonna take some time to work its way through this. So I just want to make sure everyone understands, this is a little bit different dynamic.
Step one, not the finish line.
That's, you're absolutely right.
Starting block.
Yes, we, we are, we, we are getting our heels on the starting block right now, and kind of wiggling around a little bit. And, and you can see some of the, through this process, we've actually tackled some of those, you know, regulations, and will continue to as we move forward. So, little bit different flavor of a comprehensive plan than we've done in the past, that somebody can look at it and say, oh, this is what you want me to do, I'm, I'm ready for approval. It's not a regulatory document, it, it is a set of guidelines that, at least in this place type, we will vet through more future reviews, and, and really try to align the comp plan and edit it as we edit regulations. So we may take some things out, hey, this didn't work. We tried, we heard from not only you, the council, but the general public, and it didn't go over well. So maybe we take that out if it, if it doesn't get vetted through the process. So with that said, we, we would love to get this adopted tonight and move forward.
And we actually adopt it. This is, this is not a recommendation to city council, as I understand it. Of course, city council, as we go on, as we said, this being step one, you know, as we look at subdivision regs that have to be adopted to meet these items and standalone regs, and, you know, building ordinances, et cetera, on down the line, city council is who can, you know, we can, we can adopt some subdivision regs ourselves, but other than that, city council does the rest of it. So they would be very involved in this process moving forward as well.
And we did present this about a month and a half ago at the city council work session. So we're certainly not trying, you know, they're, they're very much included in, in our efforts.
All right, is this a public hearing tonight? Yes, I thought so. All right, I'll go ahead and open the, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody wish to speak, yes, sir?
Gary Gover, 300 Lincoln Street, in Fairhope. On the, on the resolution, the second paragraph, whereas the comprehensive plan for the city of Fairhope, the plan, provides for updates every five years, that, that condition, in addition to that, the, the older notion was that there be an annual review. And I'm not sure that we did that, but that was part of the structure for the planning process. So that's something we should think about, do we want to have an annual review or an annual report of progress? The other thought about that that I have is that this is going to take the characteristic of being a sort of a living document, it'll be changed as needed or as appropriate. Therefore, for example, if we're going to do a safe streets for all master plan, I'd like to see that it would be possible to produce a master plan that'll have some features that can be plugged right into, into the comprehensive plan to, in order to achieve an, a part of their implementation. implementation. So something could be said about this being a living document or something to enable those as-needed modifications of the plan.
All right, thank you. Well, and a lot of that's what we're talking about also as far as, you know, as we go through different items and get, you know, the comprehensive plan is, in the state of Alabama, is not, and Chris, don't glare at me. I stayed at Holiday Inn Express last night, so I feel like I'm an attorney right now, but in Florida and in some states, comprehensive plans actually have a lot of legal teeth to them. In the state of Alabama, comprehensive plans don't. They're a guidance that when we think about changing zonings and, you know, from a 30,000-foot perspective, we, we should be looking at the comprehensive plan, but as far as approving individual subdivisions or not approving, it's rare that a comprehensive plan in the state of Alabama will rise itself to the point that, you know, you could deny a subdivision just based on, or a complete streets or what have you, and most comprehensive plans are very, very pro-complete streets and, you know, new urbanism and walkability, you'll find.
But it can be taken into account.
But it can be taken.
Your decisions is also taken into account as y'all develop new regulations, zoning ordinance.
Taking new regulations and zoning, so absolutely. Yes, sir. All right. Anybody else wish to speak to this item? Yes, sir.
I'm trying to get used to doing this. Again, my name is Donald DeGuts. My home is 110 Blakeney Avenue. With regards to today's plan, and then looking to tomorrow's plan, today's plan has as an introduction a citation to Alabama law, section 1152-9, which has very nice words to it. I'm just gonna read a portion of it. The plan shall be, referring to the creation of a comprehensive plan, "The plan shall be made with the general purpose of guiding and accomplishing a coordinated, adjusted, and harmonious development of the municipality and its environs, which will, in accordance with present and future needs, best promote health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, and general welfare, as well as efficiency," and on and on. This citation in today's plan is omitted from your draft, and I'd like to have it simply added back in. I think the intent, I think the words here from the state law are quite warm and welcoming, and I think that's very appropriate for our comprehensive plan. Also, with regards to your comments just now about the legally binding portion.
Sorry, I don't understand. You're saying that in the law, state law statute that you just referred to states that, that states the legal reasoning and enabling legislation for a comprehensive plan, that we need to put that in our comprehensive plan?
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Let me, let me, let me correct it. I'm just saying that today's comprehensive plan, as written, includes this statement in the introduction.
The one that was approved in 2015, the introduction has a quote of that citation.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Right.
Can we add that in without re-advertising?
I mean, you're restating state laws, so I question whether or not it's necessary in the first place, but.
I was just wondering at this point.
To the extent of the introduction of the law, I mean, it's certainly reflected throughout the whole plan. If you want to add the wording, though, it doesn't change the substance, because the current plan as exists is still subject to enabling legislation, so it would not need to be re-advertized, but I, going back to a comment you made earlier, it's nice, but it's also redundant. I mean, it applies whether or not you put it in there or not, so.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Well, again, I'm asking that because of the way it's written and all. It's, it's referring to our, our way of life here, and I think it could be added if it's without a problem.
Okay.
The other item, just from what I read regarding early discussion, the new introduction does have the words, "The Fairhope Comprehensive Plan will guide the city's decisions for future development. While the plan itself is not legally binding," understood, "city standards will be updated to match the plan recommendations, thereby providing the city a legal way to implement the plan components." That's in the draft. I think that's great. We need to do that, and I, and I hope, whether it's step one or step two, that we don't wait too long to do that. Good.
Absolutely.
It's gonna be a lot of work.
It is gonna be a lot of work. You are correct. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate the comments. I feel a little uncomfortable making a change, though, last minute without re-advertising, even though it is a redundant change, but I don't know, whoever makes the motion can take that into account. Anybody else wish to speak to this item at this time? In that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I'll echo that. I'm excited to get to the regulatory, the making it happen part after the visioning, and so, and share the concern about making change at the last minute when it's been up for comments for so long. So I'll, I move that we approve resolution number 202402. Do I need to read it?
No. I've got a motion to approve resolution 2024-02 as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.